Alright, I think we're live now, so we can start with our panel discussion on Mental Health and Digitization. I'm Helen, I'm the project lead of the venue Berlin. The venue Berlin is an innovation hub in the field of music and audio tech. We have a cool working space, stage studio. We're always here for new ideas, so if you have any idea or if you're looking for a cool working space, please approach me. I would like to start off this panel with quoting some findings of Health Musicians UK in cooperation with University of Westminster and Music Tank from 2016 report. Can music make you sick? And some findings were that more than seventy people that were questioned had experienced panic attacks and/or high level of anxiety. Sixty-eight point five percent reported they had experienced depression. A lot has changed during digitization in the music industry. It has brought many new factors. Artists can produce music independently, they don't have to rely on labels. A lot more music is put out there, that might lead to more competition. Traditionally artists had taken some time between releasing different albums or projects. With the rise of streaming and social media, it's all about constant content creation. Artists try to keep things flowing today. Today I would like to talk with Nora, Mira, Peter, Laura and Francie about this topic. Maybe you guys can quickly introduce yourself and tell us what your angle is on this topic.
Hi, I'm Nora, I work in electronic music since more than, almost twenty years. And at the moment I'm running my own artists and label management agency and so I work with artists, mostly DJs.
Cool. Yeah, yeah.
Hi, my name is Mira and I've been working in health industry since, well, in the past twenty years. Okay, my mic handling technique. So, yeah, so I've been working with people in pain since early 2000. And that went from physical pain to then working with emotional pain. And it seems, I'm a coach and counselor. And working now, I mean, I have my own company with my husband, the Mind Takeaway, where we try to help individuals and also people working in organizations, teams, to improve their mental health and state of mind.
Hi, I'm Peter Griffiths. I actually work with Mira, I'm co-founder of the business we have called the Mind Takeaway. I've had a music career and I've been in and out of the music industry for nearly thirty years, I guess, it's a long time. Nowadays, I'm a creative coach, so I'm looking to always help and point musicians or any creatives for that matter, especially younger generation, around removing mental blocks and just being able to approach creativity without any fear attached to it, really. Yeah, that's it.
Hi, my name is Laura Aha, I'm a music journalist from Berlin. I work for Music Express, which is just around the corner, at the end of the road. And my angle on this is like, because I'm not a coach, but the topic of music and mental health was brought to my attention last year, as it was probably for most people here, by Avicii's suicide and the discussion that kind of evolved after it, also in journalism. And so I had the feeling like it's been one of the most crucial pop issues of 2018 and I've written two pieces about it and done some interviews on it and yeah, I found that it needed to be brought to a broader attention.
Hi, my name is Franziska. I used to work in a really stressful music industry job for ten years with artists and in events. And I stepped out about two years ago to become a yoga teacher and now I'm also studying to become a nutritionist. And I'm now coaching people, especially from the creative industry and artists, who are going through the times that I had to go through, difficult times, especially with mental health, with also diet and nutrition. And just helping them to get more balance in life.
Great, thank you all. You guys all have been in the industry for so long, especially Francie, Peter and Nora. Maybe you can tell us what has changed in your opinion the most lately in the industry? Also considering digitization, or is that even a big topic there? What's your opinion on that?
Yeah, I mean, a lot has changed, for sure. I think that what's the most stressful part for me and also for the artists I work with is the constant need for content. And it doesn't necessarily mean tracks or music, but basically you have to feed your social media, you have to, like, there's just one platform, there's like, I don't know how many platforms, every platform needs to have a different way of addressing your audience. Every promoter wants to have a podcast when you go play, everybody wants to have an interview. It's like, you know, it's constant. And on top of that, you're supposed to be creative and have a creative output as well. I think, if I think back of when I started, I started in the beginning of the 2000s, K7 Records. There was like, you know, there was putting out a record and then you would have a PR agent, you would do some interviews, like, in a block of two weeks or something, and then that was it, basically. And there was not much more asked from the artist. And now it's like everyday, you know, put a playlist for Spotify, do an interview for that, do a podcast for those guys, you know, it's, and it, there's new stuff coming also, all the time, and you have to figure out, okay, what are the important platforms? What, you know, what, where do I need to spend time on?
Another aspect of it as well is actually making music. I've been an electronic musician since around nineteen ninety. And the technology, although it's amazing, I mean, back in the nineties, I was using a sample of the size of a house and now it's, you know, it went digital. And then it went back to hardware and modular and all these different things. So in many ways, it's amazing, right? There's so much technology. But also, that's an overwhelming thing, because as someone new coming into this, you can just get completely overwhelmed. And also, you can spend most of your life, which I did, you know, for nearly ten years, buying equipment, learning how to use it, and a lot of the times not really using it as it should have been used, and actually overwhelming myself. Whereas most artists, when they started out in the nineties, the ones I look up to, people like Richie Horton, for example, they had a few choice machines and they learned them very deeply. And then, you know, they did things that people didn't think were possible with them. So I guess it's less is more, you know, with this technology, although it can do amazing things, you kind of need to put the brakes on a bit.
So you feel like the technology is rather a burden than is actually helping you? Because it feels like the new technology is also there to democratize the music production process as well?
I think there's many benefits, of course, but you've just got to, you know, get to learn a few bits of equipment if you're starting off. The only thing I would say is just learn your equipment really well. And again, it's the whole social media thing, "Look at me, I've just bought a new synthesizer." And "Look at me, you know, I've just bought the latest electron box," or this, that and the other. But actually, it detracts from making music, right? But on the offside, it's amazing, you know, what you can do nowadays. You can buy an FX pedal with eighty algorithms on, which can literally, you know, you can play live with it forever. Whereas, I don't know, I just think there's many benefits to having this technology. But how do you rein yourself in? I think that's the biggest question, how do you stop yourself from burning out and spending all the time on social media, putting pictures on Instagram, as opposed to actually making music?
No, and I think what, you know, it's all has become so like a machine, like, almost automated. The way we expect as management, as agents, as, and we, you know, we also need to do our job. Me not anymore. So of course we expect this output from the artists, but of, you know, on the other hand, artists are very, like, real creative people are very different species to the rest of the people, I would say. If someone's, most creative people are very, like, highly sensitive and they just function, it's almost a clash, I find. So someone who is working in a very, like, productive, organized, structured, like, artists are pretty different. But as managers, we function, like, usually the people who are good at their job are in this, like, really structured mindset. And then you work with artists who are quite the opposite. And that can lead to overwhelm and to, yeah, that can be very difficult, I think, for the artists to fulfill that expectation.
It's very funny that you just said "machine-like" way, because Laura, you wrote an article about this and you said, I think you called it "the human machine" in the industry. Was there anything that surprised you or very striking that you found during your research?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it was the headline, I said it was "The Human Machine," like, from the Kraftwerk song. I think what surprised me most was the negative reaction I got somehow for the article when I posted it on Facebook. Like, it was one of our most read articles in January, I think we had like thirty thousand clicks or something, which was really good. So people seemed to be genuinely very interested in the topic. But yeah, I wrote about that this kind of glorified picture of the suffering artist and that you need to suffer in order to make art is so stuck in our heads in a way that it's really glorified. And I wrote this in my article and then in the comment section, people said like, "Oh, yeah, now, like, rock stars like Led Zeppelin are gonna read this and they're gonna laugh." Because, like, and how can you, how can you be so petty in a way and like cry? Because you have a dream job, you earn millions of money, and how can they still be unhappy in a way? Like, people weren't really believing that this is true or that this is a thing. So, which was really like, I think, it wasn't really something in the research that, I mean, of course, it was interesting and surprising things. But I think more of the reactions to it, that this topic is still so stigmatized in a way, that shocked me most, I think.
So did you rather get the feedback from the broad audience or also bad feedback from the music industry itself?
No, I think within the music industry, there, you could really see, like, there were lots of panels last year and somewhere on the festivals. And it seemed like it was a really big topic and people were really, it seemed like people were also really happy that they could finally talk about it in public, that it was somehow accepted. I think it was more like from people who are not really, like, who just see it from the outside and then they think, "Okay, I have to work as well and I don't complain." Like, how can they, like, they don't really see that it's really very demanding and also, like, physically as well as mentally, a very challenging job, in a way.
Mira, you talk a lot with artists who are suffering. Is there, are there any patterns that you can see, like, things that come again and again? And or situations that trigger a bad mental situation?
Well, you know, our perception of reality, all of us, it's very different. And that's why people that are not in music industry can't understand people who are in music industry, you know, it's... And we don't really spend much time trying to understand, we just go on with our life. But what's common to everyone, and it's not just, you know, artists or people in music industry or any other industry, is that the hu, it's a huge amount of mental stress that we are dealing with. And that changes our perception of reality. And then we start to struggle and we get stuck and we just don't see the way out in that moment. You know, it's, it can happen to anyone. There is nothing, there is nothing unusual because we are human. You know, it's, it's... And that stress can be caused by anything. It can be caused by a negative comment on something that you posted on, on Facebook. It can be caused by, and it's not the comment that it's causing you stress, but you're thinking about that comment. And then you just spiral and spiral and spiral, create it much bigger, and there you go. I mean, it might sound simple. And it is in a way, but that's something that we don't see coming very often. And that's what I see as, as a common to every human being.
So, not just to the creatives or artists, but to the general public?
Well, artists and people that are out on the light, like, we are sitting here on the stage, you're exposed. So you're more likely to feel more vulnerable or more often when you're exposed. So it could be on social media, it can be, you know, sitting here. And and now I lost my train. But it was a good distraction. So yeah, they're more exposed. It's perceived from us internally as insecure way of living, because, you know, you can be there now and tomorrow not. There is a pressure of constantly out, you know, putting something out that it's good or better than it was. So you have writers that have the same thing as well. And with the growth of social media, it's all amplified.
So you think one of the biggest issues of social media?
No, no, one of the biggest issues is that we don't know how we create our experience of life. You know, we don't know where our stress comes from. But the social media has amplified it. You know, all insecurities that you might have had, or all negative self-talk that you might have had, is just amplified now. So, you know, technology went, wow, but we still didn't learn much about ourselves. So I think that's the problem.
So what do you usually tell your clients when they come to you with those issues?
Well, the first thing that I like to tell them is that they're absolutely okay. You know, there's... And yeah, the other thing is that we think we are not. When we are struggling, we think that there's something wrong with us. But there isn't. We are absolutely fine. And it just, you know, makes me quite emotional to say this, because because it's really touching when you, when a person sees that they are absolutely okay, regardless of what they are struggling with. And that's, that's the first thing I like to tell them. They don't believe me, you know, but they, they do after a while, when they start to understand what's actually going on.
Peter and Francie, you both had a lot of pressure before as well and you changed your life a bit, like, you both became coaches. Do you wanna tell us a bit more about that experience and what made you change your mind and your situation?
You know, the thing is, when you start working with, like, famous people, in the beginning, it's really exciting and, you know, huge opportunity, of course. And you learn a lot and it's cool, I mean, it's cool to be on festivals and be on the stage and be the important person, you know, and hang out with the artists and stuff. But after ten years, or, you know, the process started probably after like eight and a half years, it just becomes a bit shallow, I guess. And I'm sure that's also what a lot of the artists experience, actually, when they question their job and what they do. Yeah, it's just another party and another, you know, like, discussion that's just pointless in a way. Like, you fight over a car or over, like, fees or over this flight or that flight, it's all, you know, it's just another event. And for me especially, you know, seeing where the world is today, I would say, you know, seeing the problems that people face. I just found it, I just found there's more important things to talk about. And, you know, talking with people in the industry, I was just looking for more, for deeper conversation and more, something with a bit more meaning, where we can actually connect on a human level, rather than on this very superficial level. For a lot of, what I noticed since then, since I started doing this work, and it was really quite touching and quite, almost shocking also at times, to see how people that I've known for years and, you know, I thought they're fine, like, they're leading a huge company or they're like, you know, have impressive career. And then you, you look behind the curtain or you just ask some questions, you know, and it turns out they're actually not okay at all. So yeah, there's a lot of work to be done now, probably, than more than ever, yeah.
Do you feel like people are slowly becoming more open to talk about it?
Yeah, definitely, there's a huge movement now, especially, I think Avicii was a little bit the breaking point, so... Yeah, no, I mean, it's on all the, you know, like, all the big, ADI, I am as like all of those big conferences are picking it up. It is a topic, the whole self-help and transformation, also the whole coaching business itself, it's definitely becoming a thing now. I mean, we're getting so disconnected that it's almost like to be able to have, like, and also, because our times are so fast and everyone just needs to deliver. So to actually be able to sit down and have a personal conversation with someone become, has become very valuable. So that's now in market, in a way, yeah.
You're nodding, Peter, did you have a similar experience?
Yeah, I agree, we were just talking before we went live, right? That as humans, with all this amazing technology around us, we've actually forgot to be human. You know, this whole thing, we're built to be connected to everyone else. And actually, when you sit down and have a normal conversation with a friend or someone you haven't been with for a while, you forget, "Oh, wow." But we're connecting with them usually on Facebook, on messaging. And as a musician, I think the segue for me into coaching was seeing one of my fellow band members completely destroying himself through alcohol, through drugs. And we were chatting before that, I was meant to do a label showcase and we missed the sound check. We really messed it up and I thought my life was over at that point, this was like 2005. And I spent the day, just before I was meant to do the performance, or I thought the performance of my life. To only find a band member who was completely fucked up and, to be fair, could not professionally perform. So I had to go and do the label showcase and we completely made a disaster of it, you know? And I think what got me curious was, how can you get like that? And why did, me especially, because I was trying to be the dad of the band at the time when we were touring. I was also doing a lot of events myself as a DJ, as a solo act. So I was kind of burnt as well and I wasn't really understanding, I guess, my own psychology. So it really got me curious, you know, how does the mind really work and why, why am I kind of okay? I'm not okay, but I can still tolerate and go out and perform, but why is my fellow band member hiding away and getting deeper and deeper into his own psychosis and the like? And I guess that kind of got me curious and I just wanted to help people. But I guess at that point I wasn't equipped, you know, now that I've been studying the mind and I've been a coach for many years. I think, as Mira said, we create our own reality. So you know this, the burnout, the friction, all of the heat that you see in the industry or any creativity, you know, any creative field. It's actually, it's all self-made, we make that ourselves. Obviously, there's physical pressure and you can have time, you know, time pressure and people giving you deadlines and the like. But I can remember back, you know, the label were quite forgiving and it was actually just all in my own head, it was my own BS that was going on. And again, that's what got me curious, looking back at my rollercoaster of a music career and thinking, well, what made me think that way? Why did I get into that situation? And crucially, what was the best way of helping someone get out of it? And as Mira said, it's, I guess, that the default thing is everyone's always okay. It's just what we, I guess, a story we tell ourselves. And that story can get deeper and deeper. And I think one good thing that's crucial to remember is if you have people around you that you can talk with and get this out your head. And to be fair, at the time, I was, I've always been very much theatrical. If I'm not in a good mood, I'll tell everyone, right? But my fellow band members were the complete opposite, they would hide away. And I just didn't realize what they were doing for two weeks, a month, six months. And they were missing, like, band practice, they weren't, you know, doing as many gigs and the like. And when I caught up with them, they were destroying themselves or they were really just feeling ashamed. And I guess they didn't wanna reach out for help. And this article that you wrote and some of the things that are now, you know, mainstream in the media, it's really good that this is happening. And also, thank you for doing this, because the more that we talk about this, the more that it's just a normal thing, you know? Humans are gonna have, you know, emotions, both good and bad, it's okay. And the more we just share that, you know, the more it will be okay to handle, I guess.
Still, I think we just talked about this, especially, I think, in the electronic music scene, releases are put out on such a frequent level. How do you deal with that and how, what do you tell your artists that you work with?
I mean, to be honest, it's not really the case for all the artists. There are people who are really just straight DJs and they don't produce music or very rarely music, it's not really the case. I don't know, I think we have to be, like, like, the scenarios that you were describing, they existed already before digital age and before social media. I think people in the electronic, or in music scene, you know, sleep deprivation, alcohol, drugs, let's be honest. It was not, it was just not so public. And now, you know, you have somebody who, who has a burnout and who behaves really oddly at a performance and then you're out there. And then it's gonna, and that's much more a problem nowadays than back in the days where it happened and you removed that person and maybe he got help, maybe not, but he just disappeared and to be honest, it wasn't even really much talked about it. I think the good and the bad thing now is that it's so out there that you have to talk about it, because you just can't ignore it. And, you know, it is on YouTube, it's gonna be on Facebook and fans are gonna see it, media is gonna see it. So you can't just not delete it and be like, "Okay, it never happened, let's put him in rehab and that's it." And yeah, and to come back to the output again, it's not, it's, like, at least for the artists that I work with, the music output, it's not really what, I mean, of course, you have also like creative blogs and stuff, but really the problem, the bigger problem is all the rest that they're supposed to be doing and to, and, you know, not having the time anymore to just do what they really wanna do, be in the studio and do a track or... And yeah, we have to constantly release, or, it's kind of expected to have, like, I don't know, every two or three months, some sort of content out there, but it, it doesn't necessarily... And that's maybe also what's, what's a little bit of a shame, because it lost its value, what a release is, you know, before you produce something. It took you a long time, you know, you talked to your label, you had maybe an A and R who worked with you on the record and all that. Now you're in your studio, you do something, maybe you test it one time in the club and then it's out, if it doesn't work, doesn't matter, in two months you have another record, you know? And I think that's maybe a little bit the frustration part also for the artists, that, you know, you're constantly just putting something out, but the value of what you have created, kind of, I don't know, I'm not an artist, but I think that's what the feedback I get a little bit, that the value decreased a little bit of what you're actually producing and you don't even evaluate yourself anymore like this, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, actually, now that I think about it, I'm not sure if now artists release more music than before. It might not even be true, but I think because the production technology has gotten so much easier and everyone can afford now. But before, you said, you know, you needed a huge studio and whatever to even produce a track. And now, basically, you can do it on the flight, on a laptop in like ninety minutes. But... What was I gonna say?
Well, I think especially in the, in the pop industry, artists used to release albums. And now they're moving on to constantly release singles. And they sometimes took a year until, or two years until they had their new album out. And now they are under pressure to release singles, maybe it was wrong to say it, just in the electronic music scene, but in the electronic music scene, you can constantly see new content, that's maybe why it appears that way. But maybe it was also the same before, maybe digitization is not changing anything there, you know?
And also, I guess, we're moving away from... And also, I guess, we're moving away from albums, like you just said, and it's really more, of course, because we're also not pressing records anymore, so now, with the digital, you can fast just release a track in between, so maybe, the amount of albums, and even maybe EPs, is not necessarily more, but it's just, you just, you just make something, it's not even maybe completely ready, and you just put it out there, plus the amount of artists, just feels gotten much more, because the production technology is so much better, yeah. But I guess the biggest, like Nora said, the biggest problem is the lifetime of a record, like, someone, I don't know, I think Def Punk talked about this a lot, huh, when they did this, when they put their album out, and it was a huge hit everywhere, and they like, didn't earn anything about it, what is the name, Random Access Memories, yeah. So, yeah, I think the lifetime, that's just really frustrating, the shelf life of a record, like, you put it out, and basically, if no one talks about it for like three weeks, even if it's an album, then like, forget about it, kind of, just move on, yeah.
So, generally, this is a question to everyone who ever feels like replying, how do you feel like, do you feel like there needs to be more awareness, and how could we raise more awareness for the topic itself?
Yeah, like we all said, we started to mention, it's just making it commonplace that, and this is even outside of the music industry, or any creative industry for that matter, that if you're suffering, you can put your hand up. And, you know, as a guy, you know, before I was a coach, there was, you know, a period in my life where I wouldn't have dreamt of talking about my emotions. For example, I made a podcast with Mira recently, where we were talking about our own relationship, which was massive for me, because I wouldn't have even dreamed of, you know, I guess it's seen as airing your dirty washing, right? But as an artist, you know, you are gonna go through, we've all talked about it, sleep deprivation, you know, you might get sucked into taking drugs, partying too hard, all of that, it's gonna take its toll, regardless of how much resilience and mental wellbeing, you know, you've got already, so, just putting your hand up, and actually, I think the crucial thing that could really help in the industry, isn't just to see that, you know, if you're touring, and you're out there, and you're really busy, get a support structure around you, friends, family, fellow musicians. What saved me back in the day was just talking to people in my same studio space, I guess I was like the dad of the band back then, and, you know, this was pre-coaching, but it really helped, and there was times when I was close to burnout, and someone next door was like, had my bag, took me for a drink, and I was close to tears one day, you know, and that really just was the difference between me going away, and hiding away for weeks, I guess.
I think awareness is just the first step, in a way, because I had the feeling when I was doing, like, I was interviewing the NGO Help Musicians UK, and also the Pop Ambulance, which they just opened this year, working with a charity, like, offering help for artists, especially for pop artists, because in classical music, it's more established than it is like professional things you can do, like for popular music, and most, the bottom line of most people I talk with, like, yeah, there's, there's not enough places where artists can actually find help and can go, because it takes so long to get, like, a space, and, like, I mean, it's great that there's now coaches, that you can just contact directly, you don't have to go to a doctor and get an appointment and wait for two months, until you can get a place for therapy and stuff like that, so I think it really needs to be just, there needs to be more opportunities for artists to actually go and find help.
You know, one thing I also wanted to mention, what we didn't touch on about, I guess that also plays into social media, is the whole comparison game, but I think that's a huge problem, and of course, social media is amplifying that a lot, that as people, we compare ourselves to others, and that's really, really unhealthy behaviour, and I think especially with artists, you automatically do this, and the biggest crashes I've seen with artists is when they start comparing themselves, and on the other side, those who seem to be able to go quite stable for years, you know, with good mental health, are those who just won't make, actually make the conscious decision not to compare themselves, and that also brings in much more creativity, so, yeah, I think that's huge also.
Anything else you would suggest artists, especially you guys, that you've been on your way, and had a change in your life, anything that you would suggest an artist, if they come to a point where they don't know how to move on?
I'll keep repeating this, put your hand up, reach out to someone, don't be scared to say that you're struggling, I know that might seem overly simplistic, but that's pretty much it. And all of the people around me who have suffered, even of late, another artist I spoke to, and I was really shocked that they didn't feel comfortable reaching out to even me or anyone around them, and that breaks my heart, really, and look at some of the recent deaths, you know, look at the guy from The Prodigy, that broke my heart, because, again, there's a narrative with a lot, you know, people who are in the public eye, so people knew there was something going on there, but, again, it's just, it can be the difference between, you know, it getting really out of control, just reaching out to someone and just sharing what's in your head, is a massive plus, I think.
Do you want to add something, Mira?
You know, we were talking about the awareness, but with awareness, we also need education. And it's interesting that, you know, we learn about physics, we learn about anatomy, we learn about biology, but nobody ever talks about how we operate, you know, they tell us that there is an impulse goes through your brain, and, and, you know, creates, you know, when you're thinking, there's something ongoing, you know, in your brain, but, but nobody talks about what it is, you know, what is your thinking, how your emotions are created, what are your emotions, what is good and bad, what is, what do you do with your impulsive thinking, how do you deal with stress, nobody talks about it, you know, we don't learn, and, and, well, I don't know why, but I think, I don't know why we didn't know that before, but anyway, I think it's always a good time to start, so, education, education of, you know, who we really are as humans, human beings, and how we create our experience, our thinking, our emotions, is, you know, I mean, we still live in a world, and I think this is quite important to mention, where we think that our feelings are coming from the outside, you know, we live in a world of, I'll be happy when narrative, and I'll be happy when will never happen, because there will, because our feelings are not coming from our goal that we are achieved, from the amount of money that we will learn, from how popular we are going to be on the social media, they are created within ourselves, and, and, and once we learn that, we are then not a victim of the circumstance, not a victim of the judgment, but actually are in control of ourselves, if that makes sense.
Yeah, totally, do you wanna?
Yeah, just one more thought, you know, the, the problem also with artists putting their hand up often is, that it's, they almost feel ashamed that they are in such a good space, they have their dream job, they make good money, who am I to complain, who am I to say that I'm not well, that I'm suffering, I have everything, like, I, so many people would like to do what I do, I'm in no position to complain, yeah, and I think this, we need to move away from that as audience, as observers, but also as artists, so I think this is a work that both need to do, that what you also noticed with the feedback in your article, they're also just humans, and quite sensitive as well, and, you know, everyone experiences, like, you can't say someone's not allowed to experience a certain amount of pain, or just because compared to yourself, it doesn't seem so real, so, yeah.
I think that's a very nice words to end with our panel, and open up for some questions from the audience, if there are questions.
Hi, this is an open question, I don't really know if anyone can answer that, so, I was wondering, when I watched this video with Billie Eilish, that Vanity Fair did, where they compared her state, like, same questions a year between, and you just noticed how, like, she was fifteen and sixteen then, and in the second year, she already blew up, and you could see, like, mentally, she was not in a good place anymore, and she was talking about how she almost suffocated, like, how she almost died, because fans at a concert were like pushing her, and I was, in that, like, in that context, I was just wondering, what can fans do to support their artists? Like, when I, when I saw Billie Eilish's video, I was like, wow, like, this girl is not in a good state, like, but I'm just like a consumer of her music, what can I do to kind of support her way into wellbeing?
As a, as a fan of the band, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just be there as a fan, I guess, is the main thing, and, yeah, it's a tricky one, because in social media, you know, a lot of artists, as you mentioned before, they don't really want to put it out there, right? Because they do feel frail, they feel exposed, et cetera, but it's just being behind the person you want to follow, or that band, if you like their music, and just, yeah, I don't know, I can't really give you an answer for that one.
I thought maybe not for Billie Eilish, because she obviously is on a major label, and she might earn a lot of money, but when I had the conversation with this guy from Pop Ambulance, he said, one of the biggest issues for, especially for artists who are coming up, is money, and I think it's very important, like, we should not underestimate how hard it is, if you have to struggle with money problems for your mental health, and I think if it's just for an emerging artist, it's very important to buy actually the music and to support them financially, and not take stuff just for free, I think that's something that fans really need to think about.
Yeah, and I think Mira pointed to this before, is just, where does our experience come from, and just as a, as a fan, it's just another human being, right? So, that's the thing, I mean, obviously, if you're up on a pedestal, you're on a stage, you're touring, it does, looking from the outside, you think, wow, what an amazing position to be in, right? But they're just another fellow human being, so that, in fact, every human being goes for the full rollercoaster of emotions, right? So as a fan, just remembering, you know, if they act in a certain way, or, for example, I've seen lots of fellow DJs getting into Twitter battles, or I've seen people ruin their career by one silly post, and again, I think the problem is that, when you know the people, we all make mistakes, right? So just thinking, right, what made that person write that post in the first place? They were in a fearful state, they might have been, you know, sleep deprivation, they might have been drinking, et cetera, and if they're allowed a bit of breathing space, most artists that I've met, who've got themselves in that situation, have still got a career, have been allowed to say, sorry, you know, I made a mistake. But the problem nowadays in social media, there's a lot of trolling going on, and it's a very scary place, I mean, I wasn't, you know, as famous as I would like to have been back in the day for my career, so I didn't really have that, and I was pre-digital social media, I guess, but nowadays, it's, it's a scary place, I mean, even for our business, right? We had a troll the other day, and it's around coaching, so, you know, when you're a band, and you've got ten thousand people following your account, you say one wrong thing, and, you know, it can get really tricky, right?
Yeah, hi, it's kind of the follow-up question to what you just asked, because you were discussing everything from a very individual level of the artists, so people have to realise that something is wrong, they have to get a coach, or they have to do lots of yoga, or whatever, to, to even like, be able to deal with the world they live in, but it seems that there are many outside influences that cause these issues, I mean, of course, some people just predispose for mental health issues, but in an ideal world, what do you think, what do you think would have to change in this whole industry for people to cope without needing, I mean, it's great that you do your job, but people should not need you, actually.
Can I, can I take this? So what I've seen recently, that, so you probably know, so there's usually the artist, the manager, the agent, you know, the promoter, so everyone has their role, but some management, so individual managers actually now start to focus more, rather than just thinking about the artist's career and the strategy, and where they should play, and why they should do that, and, you know, the money they should make, and whatever, actually to start support the artist as an artist, and as a person, and I think that's a really, really good development, and I hope to see more of that in the future, where you actually support the creative, so maybe not playing the most amount of shows, problem is that, of course, management and booking, they're all paid by percentage, so they just want to, you know, ride that horse as fast as you can, but I'm hoping that, just to have a more sustained career also, and not burn people out so fast in the future, more, I, yeah, I'd love to see that more management companies, maybe taking in a more holistic approach, and, and taking mental health more into consideration, really, you know, taking time off for the artist, let's say, often they do January, but maybe take two, three months and a year off, go into the studio, just make sure, spend time with the family, take, you know, digital vacation, like, all of these things, no alcohol on the rider, you know, stuff that some artists do, by their own choice now, because they see, you know, you can't sustain a career for many years if you live your life on the edge all the time, yeah.
Yeah, maybe actually we have to go even further, because the problem is, I mean, a lot of artists, at least in electronic music, not everybody has a management, you know, you have to have a certain status already to have a management, so basically, you're on your own, you're struggling with money, and you just have to play the game, and unfortunately, the game is, you play late at night, you play for many hours, the promoter expects you to party, you know, like, I mean, I have artists who decided that they don't want to drink anymore, they don't want to do drugs anymore, and it's sometimes even a reason they don't get booked, because they don't play the game anymore, so really, it starts about this whole perception about, you know, how a DJ has to perform, and how he has to behave, and he has to come to the dinner with the promoter, and he has to start drinking and do shots, and, like, this is all part of the game, and I guess this is already where it needs to start, where a change has to happen, but then again, when I work with very young artists, they love this game, and if I tell them, yo, this is not gonna last for a long time like this, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna hit rock bottom at some point, you're twenty-five now, you think you can do it for twenty years, you won't be able to do it, they say, and, you know, I said to you, I feel like a parent, and I didn't listen to my parents, and I did a lot of mistakes, until one day, it was like, oh, damn, they were right, and unfortunately, I do think there needs to be a change, but from, like, you know, the way this whole club scene is, I don't know, like, lives, but it's very hard to take it out, because it's a very essential part of, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a twelve-hour rave, and, I don't know, it's very hard, it is very tricky, for sure, so, I think young artists, they play this, and they think they can do it for many years, and then at some point, you reach a point where you realise you don't, and if you're serious about your career, you make changes, but they come at a price, and then you hope, you know, you hope you have a team around you that supports you, and keeps you strong on that path, I guess.
Just, there is, there is an interesting project going on, just crossed my mind, it's called The Venus Project, and it's www.thevenusproject.org, it started probably thirty or forty years ago, and they're trying to create ideal world, and it's amazing, I just don't know when it will actually happen, so if you're interested, have a look at it, yeah, and it's lots about psychology, and, and science, and, you know, and not much politics, yeah.
I just had another, another question, kind of similar to the one you answered, let's say you're a band, and you, you love touring, and, I mean, for me, for instance, that's my, my point of view, and I want to go, my, my dream is always to go on tour, like, basically, every day of the year, every year. every day of the year, every year. So, and, like, we love it, and so that's why we know we want to do that, and also all the bigger bands that I've seen or met that have, that are doing this, how do you make sure that you can do this, as you said, in a sustainable way? For instance, I thought of the, okay, no drinking on tour, obviously, because that means you're drinking every day, otherwise. But what other tricks, when you see those bigger bands that travel, you know, not just in one country, but they're like, I mean, their inner clock is completely fucked, right? Like, they have, they don't even know when to sleep anymore, right? Because they're just constantly changing time zones. So how do they deal with that and remain mentally sane slash, you know, doing this for a while?
Well, you know, because I was an agent for a long time also, and I put tours together, and I found also just the way you're touring is really crucial, so putting the tour together, of course, again, you need to have a certain level to even be able to have that freedom and choice. But you can have a tour that's smooth, and, you know, you do, like, one country by another, for example, or just put it together in a way so you get your sleeping times, you get, you know, those downtimes that you need. Yeah, so I find the structure of the tour is, it can really be a make or break also. And then from, I mean, I come from also nutrition background, but I find what you eat and what you drink is so important also, so to have, to put some emphasis on that. Because shit food is not gonna be good fuel, and it's just gonna make you go down really fast. Yeah, and just being mindful about your schedule, just really taking the time, and then not sitting in the bed and doing social media, but actually, you know, taking that nap. So it's all about being a bit more strategic with your time, I think. And getting maybe some external help to get some extra tips in there, yeah.
I just wanted to add, because maybe you should really check out the homepage of Help Musicians UK, because they started this kind of initiative about mindfulness on touring, it's called Do It Differently, I think, it's a project they just started, and maybe you can find it on the homepage, they have this kind of guideline to do it, yeah, I think they're really thinking about this as well.
I thought about this problem a lot, especially when I read Laura's article, and we talked about playing the game. And I kind of made the observation that this problem is, we can trace it back way back in time, like, we have this image of artists in pain. We can write it, we can read it in writings about Beethoven, we have Van Gogh, who is like the archetype figure of these artists in pain, these jazz musicians in the forties. And do you think that we kind of transform artists into a cathesis for us, so they can go through pain, so we don't have to go through it? And that is a perception of art that goes way back into a society, you know, thinking about art, that we have to challenge this before we can talk about, like, industry or suffering in the industry, that we have this image of artists we have to challenge.
I mean, I thought that as an artist for many years, you know, I had to be this cliched, I must make my life a lot shitter by, you know, having less sleep, taking more drugs, and then guess what happened? It was a complete shitshow, right? But then I realized that it was a simple misunderstanding, and, yeah, it is a very mainstream thing that's, you know, even now, as we progressed as humans, technology's got better, and as Mira said, in terms of our own psychology, we're only scratching the surface, right? So, yeah, it needs to be taken out of the equation, and you can't force that, so you can't go around getting all evangelical or saying, oh, you can't do this. But I guess the more artists who people look up to, especially for young people, to see that, A, they're sharing about their own psychology while they're on tour, while they're making music, you know, because we're sharing a lot on social media, right? What we're having for breakfast, look at me, I've just got up, look at my new hat, all of this rubbish. But I think what'd be really useful is, I've burnt myself a bit, crucially, I'm going to this gig tomorrow, and I'm gonna take my foot off the gas, I'm gonna have a chat with my tour manager, stuff like that. As a young person, I'd be like, oh, okay, maybe I don't need to follow that route. And I guess, until, I wouldn't say it's a mindset change, but when people realize that it doesn't make sense, what do you think happens? You know, they start to shift, and they start to do what makes sense to them, right? So the more artists, and I see this a lot now, you know, I speak to artists in Berlin, and they're all hardcore vegans, they don't drink, they don't take drugs. But crucially, I guess, the tricky bit is, as we've all mentioned, you kind of need to be at a certain level before you can have the luxury of being looked after, getting a ride or any all that. And, you know, as you mentioned before, in terms of starting out, me too.
And usually, they're over forty and did all the mistakes, and that's why they're now changing, you know, it's like...
Yeah, and to be honest, you have to fail, right? You have to learn for yourself. There's no good me, you know, saying this stuff to my blooming face, you have to learn yourself, right? But you will, you will self-correct. And although I agree that, you know, as an artist, you are, or I used to view myself as quite frail, it's amazing what human resilience is like and what you've got in the tank once you start to realize that that stuff doesn't make sense, right? So then you start to slow down a bit. And as you just mentioned before, I mean, I wanted a tour like hell, and I just want, I couldn't get enough of it, it was like a drug in itself, you know, being on the road, it's so cool, blah, 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 blah. But then, after a few missed flights and isolation and not sleeping, I was like, ah, okay, it's not as cool as I thought. But I still think it's been in a privileged situation, right? But again, I mean, I guess the crucial thing is just realize where your experience is coming from. And again, the more artists that share that me-too kind of thing, I know it sounds really cheesy and cliché, but the more artists that speak out and just say, look, yeah, my head was battered, I didn't really know what was going on, but I'm gonna share this, because I think it's crucial for my fans to realize that I need to take a break. And I see this more often now, but I guess not so much in electronic music, because as we all agreed, it's, you know, that cliched story, when I used to see the promoter, he'd wanna party me to death before I got on the flight, and, you know, I wasn't high enough up the food chain, so I was on a shitty flight, ghetto class, as we call it, as a DJ. And then I get to the venue, do the gig, barely get time to, you know, find my bearings, and then I'd be off seven o'clock in the morning back to the airport, right? Yeah.
I've just remembered that the first time I started hearing about, you know, struggling artists versus the artist that it's clear-minded and that it's possible, you know, is listening to Elizabeth Gilbert. She's a writer, quite famous, Eat, Pray, Love, I don't know anybody of you, yeah? So she did a couple of TED Talks, and she actually wrote a book about it, it's called Big Magic. So if any one of you comes across it, it's a good read, it's a, it could be a good eye-opener.
I need two more questions, if there are more questions, and then we have time to mingle and network, and then you can go talk with each other. Ask me more questions.
What advantages and disadvantages do musicians have when it comes to dealing with stress and other mental health issues? Oh, okay, so what advantages and disadvantages do musicians have when it comes to dealing with stress and other mental health issues?
I think they're at a high, they're much more disadvantaged than regular, regular people. Yeah, like I said before, I mean, artists are usually, you know, there's, in my mind, there's like two, so when I speak about artists, I mean, someone who's in a very creative mindset, but then, of course, today, a lot of the artists don't even produce music anymore. So you have, like, the performers, the entertainers, the, and that's also fine, you know, so I feel nowadays, almost, if you wanna be successful in the entertainment world, maybe you almost need to be a better, like, PR person or have a PR understanding than being the creative artist, almost, maybe the creative artist even is a disadvantage nowadays more, because they don't like to come out of their shell so much, or they like to hide in the studio sometimes. So, you know, it depends what person you talk about, but if you talk about, and there's a few hybrids, but not many, so if you talk about the real artists, I think they're highly vulnerable and highly sensitive, so actually at a huge disadvantage. If it's about performers and entertainers, I think usually they have a much higher resilience, I guess.
Sorry. Let me get my thinking cattle. Disadvantage is definitely be more exposed. Advantage is that you get to express yourself. Yeah, your creative energy just goes. You know, you can, and I think, I think a year ago or so, how about a year ago, we interviewed Hasan. He's been in the world of art and music for probably about thirty or four, thirty years? I don't wanna make him older than he is. So we had this conversations about creativity and where creativity comes from, and what is art, and, and he said something that really, really made me go, aha. He said that the art is a way of communication. It's, and he said, you know, you find your instrument, it could be a pen, it could be a brush, it could be a guitar, or a violin, or a keyboard, or, and this is how you express yourself. And, and I think this is the advantage of being an artist, a musician, or any kind of artist. And disadvantage is that you attach yourself to what you've created, and then you put it out there, and then whatever somebody thinks about it, or does to it, or pushes it here and there, you feel it very personal, and that's a disadvantage, so, yeah, that's how I see it. Does that, yeah?
I was curious if you had any advice as far as, like, time management for people that have, like, an inconsistent schedule? Because I find that's one of the things that kind of beats people down the most, is not just being overworked, but, you know, maybe whether you're a musician, or a stagehand, or a sound engineer, you might work thirty hours one week and sixty hours the next week, so it can be hard to find the time to take a nap, or meditate, or whatever. You know, if you have any advice for people that their lives are constantly changing?
Yeah, I'm a serial multitasker, and to be fair, I always thought I could do a million things at once, and actually, that didn't go very well for me, to be honest. But I guess just knowing, again, where your experience comes from, so what compounds, or what compounded the issue for me when I was touring, or I do, as you say, crazy hours one week, and then, you know, it was all over the shop, there wasn't really, you had to find a rhythm, right? And especially if you're, whatever job you've got in the industry, it can be really stressful, right? And you can be all over the place, and lots of traveling, et cetera, et cetera. What can compound the issue is beating yourself up about it and getting stressed about it, and, I know it might sound counterintuitive, but, and actually, I guess, really obvious, but just to realize that you're okay. You're still gonna have those times when you wish you had slept, right? But in terms of the science and the neuroscience behind it, you can't really ever add it back in, if that makes sense. Because I used to think, oh, I'll just not sleep for three days at this festival, and I'll catch up next week. How'd you think that went? You know, it never, never went that way. But just knowing that I was gonna be okay actually makes a hell of a lot of difference, because when I think back around the late nineties, early two thousands, I would compound the issue by getting really freaked out that I didn't sleep, then guess what I did to block that out, because I was fearful around that, I would take more drugs, or drink more, or do something stupid, you know? Whereas if I just realized, okay, this is the job I do, when I can get rest, I'll get it, right? And I'll be okay. And that made a hell of a lot of difference, I guess.
There is something that's called wisdom. You all heard about that, I guess, no? And when you get in tune with that, it's easier to navigate. It's, I guess, we all have issues with time, you know, sometimes more, sometimes less. But, and we also sometimes go into, you know, I have to do this in order to stay sane, I have to meditate two times a day, that's what we spoke about recently, and then I don't, you know, sky will fall. I need to, it's, you will know what to do, you just need to be in tune with yourself. And sometimes, and sometimes it means saying no to certain things, and sometimes it's, it's, you know, go for a quick run, sometimes you stay at home and watch TV, sometimes, you know, there is no, I used to think that there was a prescription of how we have to live life and how our day has to look like. But then, you know, how many of us actually does that? What we do is what makes sense to us in that moment, and the more we are in tune with ourselves, the more it comes out, the more you know what to do. So that's my best advice on time management.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I think we should now put on some music, finish the pizza and the beer, and just network a little bit. Thank you.